I'll cross out the town.
Okay, we're good.
Okay. I'd like to call the eleventh and nineteenth meeting of the Haymarket Planning Commission to order at seven o'clock. Call, please.
Here?
Here.
Here.
Here. Here.
All right. Anybody have any announcements, guys? I have none.
You're good.
You're good. Citizens' time. Do you wish to address this outside of your application? We're citizens' time. We're just rolling through this. Uh, anybody have any?
Motion to approve amendments.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Certificate of Appropriateness, construction permit, zoning permit application, Dawson Manor Place fence. Anybody have any input on this?
We've referred to Marchand's notes.
I have no issue with it.
I motion to approve zoning permit ZP 20121107 based on fifty-eight thirteen, I believe it's C.
I believe you're correct.
It is me.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're done.
You can run from the building now.
Yeah, now would be the time to run.
For a fence, so we don't have to have like any sort of documentation, right? I mean, as far as onsite or house or like a deck or construction?
No, there's no construction permit.
Okay, all right. I'll see you tomorrow. I'm reading the next one. Okay, tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we begin to the fun stuff. ARB liaison.
I motion to appoint Ralph Ring.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, my condolences.
I guess I should probably vote aye on this one, too, so there's no confusion later on.
Actually, it's a different parameter, but go ahead, yes.
No, I understand it's a different parameter, but...
Okay. Now the real fun stuff. CLG. Has anybody had a chance to look at this? Just out of curiosity.
Oh, yes, I have.
Certified local government stuff?
Yeah. Um, a couple of observations to open on this. We went down this road before and by we, I mean, town, and we've managed some obstacles, principally regarding the makeup of the historic district.
The body?
Well, there's a variety of issues, the makeup of the historic district, the fact that most of our historic buildings were razed at some point in the last century, and the fact that a large number of the quote-unquote historic district buildings have been modified or no longer eligible.
Modified beyond the point.
Yeah, beyond the point of no return. When we were discussing a modified historic district, I believe it was last year, could be wrong, could have been two years ago, this was one of the bullet points and one of the concerns about leaving the historic district in the state that it currently is. My reading of the documentation is that unless we modify the historic district to a much more defined geographic area with a defined set of parameters and sort of thresholds for what's in it, what's going to be maintained, what you're going to do and how you're going to handle reconstruction or modification or maintenance on those buildings, I think that getting any further into the certified local government program application is probably an utter waste of time until we get some of these base parameters established first. I think the first thing we're going to need to do is work out some sort of modified, reduced historic district, if there's any real support for going down this road, the first step is going to be to do that. And I think a couple of other questions need to be answered before anybody really spends any real time on this and tries to initiate it or tries to even begin the application. I think this body, we would be remiss at referring it back to the town council with any sort of recommendation at this point in time until some baseline numbers are arrived at and some determinations are made as to whether we can even meet the lowest thresholds required. Looking at some of this stuff, bullet point number, requirement number one is you have to establish a qualified historic preservation commission. In looking at their sample qualifications or their base qualifications, given our rather small population, I find it very difficult to believe that we're going to find enough qualified people to serve on the ARB if that's the name that we leave it at.
Well, she'd be in addition to the ARB, wouldn't it?
No.
No, it would be a modified.
It'd be a modified ARB.
But your guidelines on, from the National Park Service is a little different than the large printout covering everything.
I'm looking at the state.
Yeah. No, I think that's from parks, isn't it?
No, I'm looking at the state.
Because I have a local historic preservation ordinance for designation and protection of historic properties as being bullet point number one.
Oh, you might very well do. Okay, I'm sorry.
I do have Marchand making inquiries as to, for some of the degree requirements. Yeah, it has to be voting members, can it be staff, just so we can have all our ducks in a row.
Like I said, I think that's one of the things we need to delineate first or have somebody do the footwork on. Can we attain, can the town attain that level of staffing? And if they can, fine. I just, in looking at the requirements, the threshold and the bar that the state has set are pretty high. Generally speaking, for any of these fields, you've got to have a graduate degree in that Graduate history degree, graduate archaeology degree, graduate degree in architectural history. The architect, we've got covered, so that one I'm not too particularly worried about. But what's even more troublesome is the threshold that the state has set for documenting a candidate or a member's historic preservation interest, competence, or knowledge. And it seems like this is almost geared to people who, quite frankly, are either, it's either their lifeblood or it's their profession. Because, quite frankly, a lot of the stuff that they're requiring is almost akin to a full-time job, some of the stuff. And I just, I'm hesitant to believe that we've got enough qualified people to serve it out. So I think, yeah, a couple of things need to be answered before we go any further with this and waste any real time or money on it. That's one, determine whether or not there's any interest in preserving, or, no, any interest in preserving the historic district as it stands, or whether there is room for modifying historic district. If there's no willingness to reduce the historic district size, there's no sense even pursuing this because we can't.
Do you want that answer from council, or do you want to hear it from ARB first?
Both. I'd like input from both before we waste a whole lot of time on this. I'd like staff, I'm assuming that Marchand is doing this here, he says he's going to work on the human qualification side.
Well, from what I understand, Marchand is actually reaching out and making inquiries as to would it even be beneficial for us to even go down this avenue at this time?
And that's, yeah. Similarly, you've got a couple of other things here. We don't have any criteria in place for identifying and establishing historic districts. I mean, we tried to do this two years ago and it was shot down on a tie vote at the town council level. Yeah, like I say, if they want to go down this path and pursue certified local government, there's going to have to be some compromise at that level. What I would like to find by staff, if somebody can find out, is what is the requirement for the system for survey and inventory of historic and cultural resources? Is it as simple as having a spreadsheet? Do we have to have some sort of maintenance program with action dates and renewal dates and review dates and inspection dates? I don't know. And then they've got this really vague requirement for a provision for adequate public participation in the local historic preservation program. The historic commission is, for all intents and purposes, at this point in time, defunct. I don't think that a single elected or appointed member of the town government staff in the town in its entirety is actually a member of it now.
There are, to my knowledge, there are no members of the historical commission as of now.
I believe Pam's the only one.
Historical foundation.
Foundation, okay, so the commission itself is dead, and she's the only member of the foundation. Yeah, so, I mean, on the face of it, it appears like it's a decent idea, I'm a little...
I think anytime you can have access to additional funding, it's worth looking into how much work needs to be put into it from our end to get to the point where we're eligible for the funding. So I think it's probably worth finding out, you know, what kind of time and effort it's really going to take before we can even get to that point. Because if we can't get to that point, then there's really no value to the town.
Absolutely.
Well, our major hurdle is going to be with the town as the whole being in the historic district.
Well, I think we've talked about that in our last meeting.
Yeah, there's no way that this one's going to, that, you know, they'll look at that and the answer's going to be no.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
I think the other thing we have to take into account, and perhaps staff can look into this, and by staff, I mean Marchand, what is the implication of failing to reach the criteria last time we tried to certify?
Like, is there a recertification period or something like that?
No, we were told unequivocally that we could not be certified because we had allowed the town to deteriorate to the point where they weren't going to do it.
Just based on the structures, not based on the bodies or the ordinances or anything like that?
No, strictly based on a, on a physical analysis.
Yes, what Marchand believes was, it was the historic district covered too large an area beyond the historic downtown, and many of the contributing buildings had modifications and additions which were not in keeping with the architecture of the period.
And it goes on to say that, it doesn't, it's not to say that it doesn't have a standing, it just says it doesn't make the specific requirements.
For CLG. Now, it says, no, we do have the town historic district, and it does have standing, but not to meet the CLG requirements.
Unfortunately, I'm afraid it doesn't even have that standing because it was never accepted by the historic commission in Richmond, they've turned down. Even though Bob Marshall submitted the bill and got it pushed to historic commission in Richmond, they denied it. So they don't recognize it. So the only thing that we've got is our historic district ordinances. We don't have any recognition at the state level. At least, that's my recollection from last time.
Would it make more sense to possibly look into resubmitting to the historic commission in Richmond than the CLG as step one?
I talked to them, I mean, I guess it's always worth a try. I talked to them two or three years ago when we were doing the historic district ordinances, or trying to redo the historic district ordinances, and that's when I became aware that we weren't officially recognized. In fact, everybody had asserted that we were, and then upon checking with Richmond and actually got in writing from them, it turned out that that was not the case. It had either been miscommunicated or misconstrued, but it had never actually been done. And the impression I got from talking to the people in Richmond was that you can reapply, but no. They're pretty...
There's just no point in that.
Well, I mean, their position was, we have criteria and you don't meet it, and the criteria haven't changed. And, you know, essentially...
It kind of sounds like we need to, you know, continue forward with the whole historic district conversation that we started at the last TC meeting, and come to some decision with either the council and ARB's input, or, you know, come to some sort of joint decision as to what's going to be best for the town before we pursue that. Because we're kind of putting the cart before the horse if we do.
Absolutely. All right. Anybody want to have any further discussion on this, or just wait until we get a report back from Marchand? That's long.
We'll just have to table, and I'll, you know, between you and I, we can contact, you know, I'll ask council their opinions, we can speak to Marchand.
Get together with Marleau and deal with ARB.
That would be can't.
Oh, excuse me.
Um, yeah.
I was about to ask if it's officially liaison.
Muscle memory, I'm sorry.
So we don't have quorum for a meeting, if possible, limited to two of us with two of them?
Yeah.
So.
And sincerely, ARB liaison, that could be you.
And you.
That's three then.
That's three then.
I didn't say I was going.
Oh. All right, fine. Fine. Can, um, I'll get with Kat and work out immediately agreeable time then.
Okay. If your schedule doesn't permit, I can, I'm just teasing.
No, you're not.
Can we get a copy of the last submission that we did? So we have something to point out and say...
Marchand's looking.
Ellie has it.
Well, I've heard conflicting things. Marchand is saying this was her doing the CLG. Jen is under the impression that this was Ellie applying for a different organization to where it could be the historic commission.
Yeah, there's two separate things. There's CLG and then there's the historic.
Yes, so that's where they need to find that email.
Sorry, I had to myself to check my records because I've got a lot of that stuff. Kind of dig the computer out of the back room again.
Do you have changes to the historic overlay district that you had previously submitted?
To the text? No.
To the map?
To the map. I just, I would suggest using that as a starting place, which is where we left off last time. It's just, here's what has to be done. Given the general parameters of what ARB, planning commission, and the council wanted, I think that identifies what, I think everybody agrees has to be in it.
This wasn't the, the copy that I had gotten sent wasn't the final one we had sent forward to council.
That's the initial.
Because we did have, we had already addressed some of the other issues and had done a little overlap in some other...
That's the initial one. I do have the revised one, I just have to find it.
Okay.
Jen should have a copy of it in her email as well, and it's got, I believe it's yellow.
I think everyone got this via email.
Yeah, that was just what I had in my system that was forwarded. That was the initial map. Yeah, far be it for me to suggest what the end product would be, but I think, I think those are the areas where it's essentially a no-bran.
Yeah.
Everything else, I guess, is open for discussion and debate, but I think, I think what we need to do is get the ARB and the planning commission together, whichever four of us do it, and sort of try and arrive at some initial, some initial grounds and some initial boundaries that everybody can be somewhat comfortable with and then quibble about the individual properties.
And that way, and it's coming to birds with one stone, it's covering the historic overlay district and the possibility of the CLG.
Okay. Yeah, so, I mean, as far as the text amendments go, I'd kind of like to keep the historic overlay district, that discussion separate from all of the other ZTAs.
Yes.
Because there's not much sense in holding up everything else for that because that may, the way it's going, it could be the first thing done, it could be the last thing done, depending on what the, how much agreement there is in the various bodies and ultimately what the council wants to do. So I'd kind of like to hold that separate. The other thing I'd like to keep separate from the rest of the ZTAs, and hopefully everybody follows me on this, is the discussion of the sign ordinance. Because I think that if we go to a more narrowly defined historic district, we're going to have to amend our sign ordinances substantially because you're going to have a different threshold, at least I believe you're going to have a different threshold of sign requirements within the historic district than you are without. And then you're going to have to make exceptions for the gateway areas, the auto-traffic areas. And again, that's one of those, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me to spend a whole lot of time and effort revising the sign ordinances. And we can get some input on what everybody wants, but it doesn't, it doesn't strike me as a good idea to revise the sign ordinances now and then four or five months down the road, if and when the historic district is changed, have to go back and revise them again.
I think piece for that, a separate piece for that.
I would add that as point three for the joint conversation with the ARB. So that way, again, coming two birds with one stone, get their input on those issues as well. And it still falls in order of importance, historic overlay, CLG, sign ordinance.
Okay.
And I like your term revise, with a lot of our sign ordinance, I think, you know, well, rewrite would be a more...
I mean, it's almost as much about enforcement as it is about what it is that we're doing because we can write through a blue face.
Let's have a little bit of discussion about that then. I mean, sort of get, I want to kind of get a sense of where everybody stands on this. You know, Marchand asked a set of very good questions when it comes to the review of the sign ordinance, and I think the threshold question, do we want to replace it in its entirety or amend it? I can tell you that the last time the sign ordinances were done, I personally, and quite unequivocally, took a hands-off position on this. I had nothing to do with rewriting because this was a war. It took a very, very long time to put into place, took a very, very long time to draft, and there was a considerable amount of compromise, give and take, review, redraft, and revisiting ordinances in a variety of other jurisdictions. Personally, despite some public outcry to the opposite, in reviewing our sign ordinance versus most other jurisdictions, we're actually quite liberal. Our sign ordinances are not nearly as restrictive, both in size and mountain placement, as most other jurisdictions. And they're considerably less strict than jurisdictions like Middleburg, for example. So I think we need, we're walking a fine line between maintaining the character of the town of Middleburg with their more restrictive ordinances, or turning it into, for lack of a better term, Route One, with dealership signs and neon everywhere.
I mean, I've been here for sixteen years, there was the goal to be Middleburg, and then there was the goal to be Aqua Quack, and then there was the goal to be Leesburg.
I've always wanted us to be Haymarket.
Which is a good comment. Enough said, we should be Haymarket.
So by that, I take that everybody wants to amend, not rewrite.
Well...
Well, I... Okay. I take that incorrectly, obviously. I mean, I can live with it either way.
And if you go back and you say, okay, you know what, we're not historic because we destroyed our buildings historically. There is no such thing left in this town as a historic building. Maybe one or two.
We still do have enough of ours.
But that doesn't mean you can't, you can't...
Pretend.
I'd be doing ourselves a disservice if we didn't maintain some sort of historic area here for those areas that are truly historic. The bottom line is, it's, you know, it draws people to your town. Whether the buildings are truly historic or not, it brings people here. And that's what you want to see. That's what you want to try to get is the vitality of the town to come back to the point where people want to come see it.
Right, and, but also with the signage, the signage is important.
I agree.
Because if people can't see the signs, then they don't know the businesses are there. So, right, Bob's right, we don't want to go, we don't want to be Route One.
Yeah, and I don't think we need to rewrite it. I think there are some of the things that could be amended or changed, but I think, I'm back to my original comment, I think part of the problem is enforcement. We can talk about it through a blue face.
Well, that's, yeah, if we can't enforce it...
If we have no way of enforcing it, then it's kind of tough, you know, for us to walk down the street and say, hey, look, you know, take your sandwich board out of the middle of the street, or take it out of the front stairs, you know? Those are things we really can't fix right off the hand, right off the top. You know, the only other solution in some cases is to eliminate them, unfortunately. And then, you know, then we're back to the public saying, you know, you guys are killing the business here, you can't even let me put a sign out front, you know? And so it's kind of a tough, a tough line to walk, you know, to meet both ends of it.
We're damned if we do, we're damned if we don't, from the way we do it.
And from my standpoint, addressing all the same issues Ed is, is why I think we need to start from scratch, you know?
I don't mind either way. I just think, in sort of tying everything together, I think one of the things that's lost is, I think the sign ordinance should provide some sort of continuity in the town in terms of what your expectation is, what your advertising is going to look like. I think that's actually more important. It preserves that faux historic appeal, but it sort of ties everything together. You don't have this mishmash of different, different types of, garrishly different types of signage, where you don't have your old-style, you know, ye olde shoppy sign next to the trailer with the neon blinking light advertising, you know, Joe's Auto Lube on Tuesday. I think we've got, I think, I think the base parameters of the existing sign ordinance are pretty sound. Do we need to tweak the direction? Yeah. Are there particular aspects we need to look at for tweaking? Yeah. Marchand makes a very good observation. Do we, do we limit it? I think, I think he's right. One of the things that, the problems I think that we've got is, we've got, our sign standards are based on zoning district as opposed to geographic location. And what makes sense for the B1 on the east side of town doesn't necessarily make the same sense for the B2 and the second side of town. So do we, do we develop a sign ordinance, and this would involve substantial rewriting, where we're looking more at the geographic location and what the surrounding uses are rather than the particular zoning? Or do you place a subcategory within the zoning? Does that mean creating an overlay district? Probably.
See, that's kind of what it comes down to.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, how do you, like you say, how do you tie it all together? If you say all of our signage will be historic...
Yeah.
There's places where it's absolutely not appropriate.
And an overlay district, or overlay districts may be the only solution, or maybe the easiest solution. So I think that's something else.
Is Leebury the only area that's grandfathered?
No.
Yes.
No.
Who else is grandfathered?
The sign in front of the Red House is grandfathered, the sign in front of Madison Corner Shops is grandfathered, the sign...
Did you just mean illuminated signs, the inside illuminated, or just in general?
In general. Any kind of grandfather, you know, there's a lot.
In general. Because, you know, if there's, if there are that many places that are falling under that umbrella of being grandfathered, we can sit here and talk about all we want. We're not going to be able to influence any of that. So we, that's, I think, when it comes to trying to get those properties to blend in to what we ultimately want it to be, is kind of where we're going to have to find some middle ground. I think it's going to be more important than the ordinance itself because there are items in place that we really can't change. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, that being said, you know, we probably need to look at how we can best utilize what's already in place with where we'd like to see it hit. I mean, I guess that grandfather clause only ends once the business owner changes, is that basically the way that falls out?
Once the property...
Is the new business owner still able to...
Property owner, isn't it? As long as the business owner is...
No, no, you can maintain, for instance, the sign in front of the Red House. Even though the property changed ownerships, so long as, the only thing that changed was the display text on the sign, it could be maintained in its non-conforming state. Same thing with Madison Corner Shops. They keep changing that hanging sign that hangs beneath the main sign because they're allowed to under grandfather. It's, it's probably not the greatest issue we face in the sign ordinance. I think our bigger issues are with the new construction or newer construction, and signs facing traffic, and I think that's something we probably need to address. For the time being, if there's no objection, I'm going to do what I really don't want to do, but I think since Marchand and I have been involved in this from the very beginning, what I'd like to do is sit down with Marchand, just he and I sit down and go through the sign ordinance and pick out the, the language issues within it, the specific language issues, and start working that text up, dealing with the input that we received over the last couple of years on signs, and sort of massage that to where that's at a point that we can actually sit down and review it. But I don't think that we need to, I don't think we should, really move any further than that until we get this historic district issue taken care of, and we decide, and we decide what we want to do about overlays and other districts, and how we want to, how we want to treat signage from either a use or geographic location standpoint. And I don't think we're at that point yet, and I don't think we can be at that point until we get some sort of, and it all comes back to the historic district. Until we get that nut cracked...
Right.
I don't think we can really go anywhere else with this because it's so subject to change.
Well, I think there's, we can all agree, there's lots of room for improvement.
Yeah. And there's considerable massage in of just the base language.
Well, I think the other thing that we have to bear in mind is the business owner's perspective. I mean...
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and, I mean, and the grandfather stuff, that's going to be there pretty much your perspective. We've really got to take a look at potential new businesses coming in, there's still some of the property here, there's, you know, the whole thing we're going through with the baseball guys now, the characteristic of the town, if we do become this niche sports area, you know?
We'll have to allow baseball balls and footballs to sign.
As long as the replayable come down every night.
Ah, that kind of...
Council has requested an ETA on our sign ordinance.
Would you report that to council? That at this point in time, it's unknown. It's in their hands. As soon as they come to an agreement on the historic district, we can give them an ETA on the sign. on the sign ordinance.
Okay, and since I know I will be asked, ETA on historic overlay district with commission's recommendations. January?
No.
I think February is probably more realistic.
I think February is more realistic, and even that's...
With the holidays and everything else that goes on, just so many things going on, it's very difficult to make.
Tentatively, February, and that's iffy.
We have, what, two meetings prior to that? A December and January meeting?
Well, let's see. Let's just go ahead and make that March.
I don't foresee us building any sort of real consensus between now and February.
I haven't, quite frankly, been able to spend any time on it at all. I just...
Okay, as I said, we will just make that ETA in March.
As long as you're reporting that back to council, enforcement is the key, right?
Well, I think that's part of the problem. I'm not going to say it's the key, but I certainly think that's part of the sign issues that we have here is...
But it's a good point. If you can write all you want to, but if you can't enforce it, it's pointless.
Yeah, the banners and the sandwich boards are kind of going overboard here lately, and they're... There was, I think originally, it was, you know, it was well-intended, because that's a lot of what you see in a pedestrian environment, is sandwich boards outside, on or near the sidewalk, to try to get people's attention to come in and visit, but it's, they've become permanent fixtures, it seems.
And we don't have that much pedestrian traffic. We're really not a walking town.
Yet.
Actually, there was quite a bit. It's interesting you say that, because I was just saying the other day that it actually increased. I don't know if it was this past weekend or the prior one, when I was out early, for s- I don't remember if I was going into Manassas for something, but it was, it amazed me, the amount of traffic. I saw families walking back, yeah. I saw a couple of families walking back, like they'd gone out to eat someplace, and they're walking back with their dog, you know? I mean, it was just, I was amazed at how much pedestrian traffic there really was. As much as we'd all like to see it increase, I was just amazed at how much there actually was. It was a nice day, I mean, with a lot of people out. Not just along the main drag here, but, you know, walking down Fayette, and, you know, walking back up here, which is dangerous as it is, it's dangerous to walk back up Jefferson and walk down Jefferson towards Miles. But they do it.
To that end, I think we have to start someplace. And they did revise the state code last year, HB 34 amended section 33, 33.1, stroke 373 and 375, that allows the VDOC commissioner to enter into an agreement with the town, or any other jurisdiction, that would allow the town, specifically its police department, to act as an agent of the commissioner regarding unlawful signs and advertising on the highways, i.e. pulling up popsicle signs, the real estate signs, the taekwondo signs, the...
Whatever it is.
Joe's barbecue signs, whatever it is. And they do establish a fine, and at that point in time, we would split the revenue with the state. So my view on that is, it kills two birds with one stone. It raises revenues that are non-taxpayer-driven, and it eliminates our popsicle sign thing. So I'd like, if we're going to go ahead and revise the sign ordinances, perhaps we need to take a look at the mechanism for enforcement, and if, and I'm sort of loathe to do that if we're not going to take advantage of the powers that the General Assembly has specifically enumerated to the town. So I'd like a little bit of input back from them as to whether or not they want to approach the commissioner, Transportation Commissioner, and enter into this agreement, in which case we've got a lot more ability to actually start enforcing something. And a little enforcement goes a long way towards engendering greater enforcement, because at least you've got a stick to rely on, or at least past experience.
So this would actually give us a little bit of bite to go with our bark?
Correct.
Because right now, it requires...
We probably have to...
I'm sorry. Right now, it requires a council action, a letter from a lawyer, and...
Requires council action, because they have to, what do they have to do? They have to enter into an agreement with the commissioner of highways. I don't see the commissioner of highways...
Enforcement, okay.
Enforcement.
We'd have to, they would have to enact an ordinance change, correct?
Okay, no. Current enforcement.
What do they do?
Um, Gene sends a letter.
And they laugh at us.
And they laugh at us.
If it's really bad, Gene sends another letter, and if it's really bad, Chief Rupp goes down, basically.
Well, that would be one part of it, that we'd have to make sure that we're all on the same page with Rupp and his group, because it's going to be his commitment to time and energy, so...
I got a four-by-four.
You know, I don't know how much it's, you know, I don't know how much time it's going to take, or how much, but I think it would be unfair to not include him in the conversation if we have...
Oh, absolutely.
You know, if we're thinking about going down that road, we probably ought to say, "Hey, by the way..."
Having his officers have additional duties.
Yeah, exactly.
And, because again, if it's a law enforcement officer doing it, they got to have the code, they got to know what they're enforcing, it can't be arbitrary, it can't be, "I don't like that color."
Right.
It's strictly going to be based on location, that's it.
It's basically just about keeping stuff out of the way.
On the right of ways. All right. Everybody have a copy of the markup ZTAs that Marshant sent out?
I believe so.
You don't have this one?
No.
I think it's one of the documents that I couldn't...
Here, I think I've got that copy. I don't want to even play with the definitions tonight.
I think yours and mine are different, but hopefully we'll still be able to follow along.
First one I've got is 58-1 definitions. They're on the chart in the back. I don't think we're anywhere near addressing that until we get the text done. 58-12, the zoning of the annexed areas, I don't know why we still haven't done this.
Yes, you do.
Oh, yeah, I do. If there's ever going to be, I mean, let me change that. Regardless of what the town's intention is, either at this point or in the future, with regard to annexation, as currently written, our zoning text does not comport with what's I'm a big one on keeping options open. It's obvious that we need to amend the text, because the text as it's currently written just doesn't comport. This particular zoning text has been vetted legally, I believe. Yeah, this was vetted by Bennett, correct?
Mm-hmm.
In its current format? After much argument, and I, to me, it's a no-brainer.
I would send this one to Lisa, and then forward it on to council as written.
58-12?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We'll talk about that next month, as soon as we get a better sense of where we stand. Requirements for permitted uses, this is one that, this is Marshant's bailiwick. He understands the reasoning behind this. I don't quite understand it. I've got a good sense of why he wants to do it. I don't know what the legal implications of it are, so I think we're going to need to defer on this particular section until Marshant comes in and explains the implications for the zoning administrator and for future use. A lot of this is going to go towards stuff that happens down at the shopping center.
Where do you have the zoning administrator text?
I don't.
I went from...
I doubt.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The language has an impact more on the zoning administrator than it does anything else, by changing it from previous user to non-conforming activity.
Okay.
There's a subtle nuance there that Marshant understands a whole lot better than I do. And I think I'd really like for him to elaborate on what that's all about. 58-257, use regulations. We've gone over this, it seems, every other year, whereby somebody proposes to bring forward all allowable uses in the B1, the B2, and allow them in the industrial district. Historically and to date, I remain opposed to that personally. I don't know what anybody else's feeling on this is. Your I-1 district is to serve a particular purpose, and industrial uses really aren't congruent with what's generally in your B1, be it small retail shops, be it doctor's offices. And I think it does two things. It sets up your I-1 zoning district for failure. If you're going to convert it entirely to retail, or office use, or, you know, similar types of B1 and B2 uses, and if that's what the town's intent is, and I think the town should just go ahead and enact a zoning map amendment, and, you know, change the zoning of the entire I-1 district. If you're going to maintain the I-1 district, it needs to stand on its own, and it needs to have its own set of criteria and use regulations, so that you don't have incompatible uses that reduce the benefits of the people who actually want to avail themselves of the I-1 zoning. If you think it's too big, reduce the size. If you think it's outdated, get rid of it entirely. But as long as we're going to have a distinct I-1 district, I think you need to have distinct uses. Otherwise, you sort of get a mission creep from B1 to B2 to I-1, and then at some point in time, your zoning is meaningless, because everything, everywhere, anytime.
Is the I-1...
The yellow area on the map. Century Stair, the shopping center, the building where Haymarket Motors is.
The whole rationale behind this is because of all the grandfathered uses in Lee Berry.
And that's a poor rationale for doing a zoning text change. Because a non-conforming use exists, we're going to change the entire zoning ordinance to comport with a non-conforming use? Because somebody did a bad application and a bad, and made a bad decision 20 years ago? Like I say, I mean, I don't know how anybody else feels about this, but again, this one's a no-brainer for me. I would just, this is a non-starter, and I would just send it back to council with a recommendation to leave it as is. But we can, if anybody has anything else on that, we can take that up again next month when Marshant's here, and he can give you the better...
I mean, I would like to find a better way of dealing with the Lee Berry grandfather issue than changing, you know, all of the allowable uses in I-1.
Rezone.
You know...
But that would just be that one portion of that existing...
Everything from the property line north, all the way up to the street. But then you have a problem with sheets.
I don't know.
Potentially, but they're grandfathered.
That's kind of a bailiwick, already.
Yeah. Well, let's talk to Marshant about that next month, and see what his thoughts are. I think it's going to be one or the other. Either you leave the language as it is, or you, if your intent is to allow that type of use in that area, then rezone it. I mean, they've got the authority to do it.
Well, and actually, no, we can't rezonate.
Sure you can.
No, well, then we fall into the McDonald's issue. Drive-through windows are in the I district, so...
They're actually allowed to be one under specific circumstances.
With an S U P?
Yep, which they have. Which has never been renewed, but that's another sore subject with me.
I love that term, special use.
Well, they have to come back anyway, if they're going to expand the lanes.
Well, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, so, and in fact, if you go...
Expanding the lanes gets the people off of 55. Are they done yet?
Which gets to the next section that Marshant's proposing, which is 58-258, which regards special uses in drive-throughs in the I-1. Again, I think we have to get to that threshold, there's a threshold question that has to be answered. What does the council want? Do they want an I-1 district with distinct uses? Or do they want, do they want something else? I'm almost persuaded that perhaps it's time we look at that, and do it, and suggest a town-initiated rezoning of a portion of that property. Because it seems that all we're doing is writing text to justify a non-conforming use. And that's not, that's not good planning to me.
I mean, yeah, really, you're getting a mishmash here.
Yeah.
It's a nightmare.
Everything, all the time, anytime, so...
Does this actually show a property lot line?
Yes, it does.
Oh, my God. Wow.
The entirety of the yellow area.
Yeah, that's...
Again, they...
Essentially, the exception is the Lee Berry corner, if you look at it from that standpoint. The Lee Berry sheets and McDonald's area was really all you're really talking about when it comes to what should be zoned differently.
Twenty-five percent of the entire industrial district.
If it's the right thing to do, it's the right thing to do. I mean, there's going to have to be a decision made at some point, otherwise, you know, if Sheets decides not to raise a month from now, because they've decided they don't want to do it, and, you know, Checkers is there, we had a different problem. Of course, Checkers is a wall right now.
And it's not a drive-through.
Well, you can drive through if you want to, but they've got to get irritated with you probably.
Yeah, they're going to kind of frown on you for that, aren't they?
Well, to Bob's point, if what you're trying to do is encourage a particular type of business to come here because of your I-1 zoning, what's the town's intent?
Yeah.
Is the intent to draw anything at all that would just take up that space, or provide a specific use?
Well, I think one of the problems...
Yes, to both.
Well...
See, that's kind of the feeling, again, yes, yes to both, wait a minute.
I think it's a problem of inertia, that the town had a particular desire and a particular plan 40 years ago when this was drafted. And because there's an inertia against changing anything down there, over time, it's sort of morphed into something that it's not supposed to be. And both the ordinances and the long-range land use, and the actual land use, no longer comport, and one has to wonder whether the plan for that particular sector is even viable anymore. Does it make sense to maintain that type of industrial base any longer? It probably made a lot of sense when there were very few residents in the town, when there were no other viable businesses in the town. Does devoting, what, what's that? One-sixth, one-eighth of the town to an industrial sector that doesn't provide any particular revenue stream that's any greater than anything else, and might even be to a lesser extent? Does it provide any real job opportunities in the town? Is the concept of an industrial section of the town something that's now outdated? That's a question above our pay level, but...
That's a fair question.
That's a fair question. It's probably, it's probably a question that needs to be answered. And, you know, the problem is that I don't know that anybody's going to want to answer that question, because it requires some very, very tough decisions by the council. Specifically, are you going to go to a town-initiated rezoning, forced rezoning of existing property? And how are the property owners going to feel about that? My guess is, most of them won't care. In fact, I suspect that some of them would actually welcome it. But there's always going to be a fly in the ointment, and, you know, and anytime you start getting into rezonings, and challenged rezonings, and that sort of thing, it gets expensive and hairy. But, you know, at the end of the day, I think the town's got to decide what its vision is for that quadrant, and before we spend an inordinate amount of time rewriting and massaging things just to iron out the non-conformities, it...
It really, that doesn't take you far.
Yeah, it doesn't take you far enough down the road at all, so... I guess we'll wait till Marshant gets in next month. I'd like everybody to kind of look at this and have a more reasonable discussion. I'm going to assume that you're going to take this issue up with the council...
Yes.
...as part of your planning commissioner's report. I'd really like some feedback from them. Next section, 58-260, this again is a no-brainer. Because of the requirements for the Chesapeake Act, I think, the first issue with regard to vehicle storage lots, we have to do that. We can't afford to have runoff go anywhere anymore. You've got virtually a zero output off-site at this point in time, your violation of the Chesapeake Act. So, I mean, it's almost a mandated action by the state. It's not quite that strong, but it's pretty close. I don't know why Marshant has eliminated the performance standard in the I-1 for review by the Architectural Review Board. I think that's something else we're going to need to ask him next month. He's got the language for the S U P approvals. You've got that as well from last month, correct? That addendum he put on the end?
Yes.
About, I don't have a copy of it handy. But it's that standard language we've got...
Yes.
...about renewals being automatic for, what is it, a period of five years, I think? Or something like that?
No, it's renewable.
Or perpetuity? Okay. So, I kind of want to ask Marshant about that particular aspect. We've already talked about the historic districts, but this is the other, this is the other part of the equation. This is the part we've already passed, right? 58-553, that was last month, right? Now, already did that, right? Now, 58-553, you can cross off, that's already been done. Now, fifty-eight five five three, you can cross off. That's already been done.
You said fifty-eight five point three?
Yeah, it's on page. Uh, creation and boundaries.
Fifty-eight four sixty-eight was done.
And five five four, the next one, that page, that's already been done.
Yes, and five five four.
Okay, five five eight is merely housekeeping. This is an omission from the previous set of, um, revisions. It was something that was just overlooked, making these two changes. Again, it's a no-brainer. There's no objections. This is one of those things that, once we get the baseline of this other stuff together, we could just forward to Lisa for review. Any objection?
No objection.
Nope.
Fifty-eight five five nine. I thought we had already done this. Or did we put this off last year?
Which one?
Five five nine. I know there was a move to do it. I just don't recall what we ended up dealing with it last year.
I believe we were asked to look at it. We sent it forward and Bennett was not happy. Chuckle.
Well. Yeah, I suppose, yeah, until we, until we arrive at the historic district standards, we can probably allow this one to wait. Yeah, we have not changed it. And this is substantially different than what we've currently got. I know it's been vetted because a lot of it's taken straight out of the state code. Oh, that's what the problem was. This is actually mandatory by state code, isn't it? I think that was the whole argument. Why are we gurgitating what the state code says instead of just referencing that section of the state code?
You're talking about five eight five five nine?
Five five nine. All that red, all that red is straight out of the state statutes. And rather than expand the zoning text by a page and a half, I think the, the idea was you simply reference the state code section because it's the law. I mean, it is what it is. Shall be done in accordance with fifteen point two stroke, whatever the code section is. Since it's a historic thing, I think we can hold off on that. Certificate of appropriateness. Have you talked to, um, A R B about this? Has anybody talked to A R B about this? Validity of a certificate of appropriateness for one day or for one year? I don't, I don't have any.
Marshant may have, but.
I don't have any issue with doing it. I just don't know if we have the, the authority. I'm assuming we have the authority to do it, but I'm not, I'm not certain on that. Presuming that's something the town can determine unto itself. I don't think there's a.
Seems like a long time for, for nothing to happen.
Well, the, the problem is, you know, we're in a doing rule state, so does the, did the general assembly grant us the authority to limit the period of time that a, that an A R B certificate is good? And it's sort of a loaded question. I mean, do they, do they allow the locality to issue a certificate of appropriateness? Yes, under the statute that, that ordains the, uh, the architectural review board. Is it? And, and this is the question I don't know the answer to. Does it, does it delineate a period of time that it's good for or does it remain silent? And if it remains silent, I think the default position is being a doing rule state, you can't then define a period. Probably a question for Lisa. As to what the legality of that is. Perhaps Marshant knows. I know he's dealt with this with, with Middleburg.
Almost, Lisa.
I mean, if you go and look at other sections, like site plans have specifically enumerated, uh, periods of time to which they're valid or at which point they become invalid or invalid unless you take a certain threshold action. So I, I don't know if the same thing applies, uh, to a certificate of appropriateness. I mean, it's different from a building, building permit where the building permit is, 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 um, part of the state code in terms of. Where they, when they adopt the building code, uh, when they adopt B O C, it's got within it the, the limitations on how long the building permit is, is valid. So you're adopting that by statute. And I don't know that there, uh, there is any limitation on this and what the impact of placing one is. And I think that's probably something we should, get out of the way. Again, if it's, if it's something that we can't enforce, um, then there's no sense in doing, even going down this road. Take a look at the state code tomorrow. Rules and regulations of the zoning. We did this one too, four sixty-eight, right? Yes, four sixty-eight, you can cross off. That was done last month by town council, correct? Check my list.
Yes. I believe so.
Yes. We crossed that off. That's already done. Street lighting on Washington Street, Rebecca.
Um, this is the one to make sure that all new lighting goes up follows in the same style that we have. And that's also with the, you know, not just a set of the field, but, you know, as of right now, we are using induction lighting. So while new lighting going up needs to follow the same, that's the picture, you know, the whole purpose to this one.
Is this your respective where the lighting is, what's, what it's intended to light?
No, it's very specific for.
This is within a streetscape.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the big change to this was the technology piece.
The, yes, the induction lighting.
Because the, the, try to keep the same.
All right. What I'd like to do is everybody kind of take a look at this. I'm going to have some questions from Marshant. You're going to take care of staff. I'll take care of A R B.
Did we get this in either?
Yes.
Yes. What I'd also like everybody to do, if you have the time, is come forth with any other zoning text amendments you wish to suggest at the next meeting. I know that's a dangerous, dangerous request for some of you.
I may have to make time for that.
But if there's anything else in there that, that's a pet peeve or something that you think needs to be updated, and there are quite a few things in here, and I think Marshant and I are going to talk about a few more. What I'd like to do next month is, again, winnow the list down. Winnow the, the list down to the non-objectionable, no-brainer stuff. Get that out of the way. Take a look at what we can't do on the historic, until the historic district is squared away and sort of generate a list of what those items are. And then whatever's left is the stuff that we're going to have to hammer out. And by keeping it, by compartmentalizing it in that fashion, I think it's a whole lot easier for us not to get along, not to lose the forest for the trees because we're going to be dealing with a specific subset of issues as part of each discussion and not, not allowing them to sort of blend over. And I think one of the reasons for taking the historic district and, and sort of dealing with that first and determining what, what other things are impacted by it, we're not going to, we're not going to get dragged down in this never-ending discussion about, we can't do this because we still haven't done this. And if we just separate them out from the outset, then we don't even bother with them until we square that, until we square that, that, that threshold question away.
We have a soft copy of that, Matt.
There's one I can email to you out of the online version of the, um, you can actually pull, if you go onto the.
Just be kind of nice to reference, you know, some of these things we're talking about. You can kind of get your arms wrapped around what you're dealing with.
I can print that out. That's, you can.
I don't want to print it. I just want to see it. I don't want to see it on my computer. I don't need to print it out.
Oh, you can grab it.
I'm not a tree hugger, but I'm not a tree killer either.
You can grab it, you can grab it off the website. It's in the comp plan.
It is?
It's a PDF page in the comp plan.
That's all we know?
With that, anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, still here, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, now it's under the bill, maybe. Do we have any candidates yet for, um, the debate ticket?
No.
I haven't received.
We have.
Where? They were passed.
They need to resubmit.